Alrighty, we're all set.
Thanks, Marina.
Thank you, okay. I make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
Lanpher, second.
Okay, trustee Lightkeb?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanpher?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I ask any of the board members if they have any conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items before us this evening?
Lanpher, I do not.
Lightkeb, I do not.
Stetser does not.
And Plummer does not. Okay, Marina, could you just cover the open meeting compliance?
Oh no, it's on my desk. Um, shoot. One moment, let me see if I can pull it up quickly. My apologies. I'm sorry, I don't have those guidelines readily available. I had to print it out, but I left that right on the back.
They're actually in part of our packet, so, but we know, we basically have the general understanding that you, public speaks for three minutes, they speak to only agenda items. You state your name and address for the record. We expect common courtesy and decency and respect for everybody in attendance. What else did I leave out? Anybody want to prompt me? Funny, we've heard him a million times. Oh, we've got the, we've got the basics. Okay, before we get going on the agenda items, I would like to just speak to an accident that happened on October 1st where one of our DPW employees was injured. And it was a tough day, but he's gonna be okay, everybody knows that, and he's coming along nicely. But I do just want to speak to the fact that every single person who had any involvement really stepped up. Whether it was people at Village Hall, the first responders, people from the town. Everybody from DPW just did what they needed to do to really make things happen. But I really would like to put forth a special commendation this evening. And I would like, excuse me, I'd like the board to hopefully respond to this with a positive motion after I read the commendation. This is a certificate of commendation for Joan Rule. It's difficult for me to speak, sorry. For meritorious conduct. On October 1st, 2021, Ms. Rule used quick thinking and applied her background in emergency training to come to the immediate aid of a fellow coworker in a life-threatening situation. Board of trustees hereby issues this formal commendation to Ms. Rule and is forever grateful for her actions on that day. I would appreciate a motion from the board to put forth this commendation.
So moved, trustee Lanpher.
Stetser, second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lightkeb?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanpher?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It was amazing.
Thank you, Joanie, for watching. I don't know if she's watching. Thank you, Joan Rule.
She's here.
All right. And just on another note, right after that, Joanie's vaccinated, but she did have a breakthrough case of COVID, she's coming along, but it's been a heck of a time. So we're all coming out on the other side and we have a great team. Okay, so I'd like to move forward. We're gonna start now with our reports. Steve, you're up, building inspector. Any questions for Steve? Want any? Steve's been busy.
Yep.
Any other thoughts? Go ahead, any, I was just gonna say anything you wanted to.
Yeah, a couple things.
Add to, yeah.
A couple things. First thing is, we found out Zach, Zach had said something to me about their trimming of trees. Arnold Landscape was in, trimming as a subcontractor for O'Connell Electric, who is subcontracting for our G and E. They end up cutting a pretty good-sized tree off of the right-of-way on the corner of East Jefferson and Main Street. They have offered, I did a little runaround, kinda taking different people today. And they realized that they never should have clear-cut the tree. They trimmed it and apparently whoever trimmed it trimmed it too much, so they chose to chop it right at the ground level. It was about a 14-inch tree. A pretty good size. Zach, you guys planted it, I think they said somewhere in 2011 or 12, something like that?
Yes, correct. I believe the tree to be at least 14 years old. Okay.
What kind of tree was it? Excuse me for interrupting. Do you know the variety of it?
I believe it was a little, little-leaf linden.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, what, what Arnold has offered to do is plant two new trees for us. I would assume we would want one back where that one is after they stump it and put one, you know, relatively near where that one was, and then the village would choose another location. So that, that's something I want to put in front of the board, that you can think about wherever you would want another tree. And if that's satisfactory to the board for the action that happened.
May I ask a clarification question on that, Steve?
Yeah.
So the offer from our G and E is that they would replace the tree that they removed as well as a bonus tree that we can pick another location? Is that the way I'm understanding this?
Yes, Arnold would do it since it was their foreman who ended up cutting the tree ground level.
Also, we have the choice of tree.
I can, I can verify that. I'm sure they're, they're gonna be pretty pliable because they made a pretty large mistake.
Well, I also, and I didn't get an opportunity to, Zach, to speak with you either. If you turn down onto South Main Street, down towards where I live, there's a, they have literally taken trees and just pretty much cut them in half. So the trees are going to be compromised if there's a windstorm because they're top-heavy on one side. And we need to have everybody take a look at that. So I'm glad we caught that one tree, but I think there's a little, little ways to go here. I think there's more than one tree involved.
I think, go ahead, Zach.
Yeah.
No, I absolutely agree with you, Elisa. All the work that they have done seems to have butchered just about every tree they touched. I think a pretty thorough analysis of the condition of the trees as they stand should be, should be investigated. Perhaps even getting an arborist in to, to see, you know, what the longevity of each tree is going to be at this point. A lot of them just don't even seem like they should be standing anymore. They, they may as well just come down. Just a thought. And also, I looked at the tree up, it was a pear tree.
Tell me again, excuse me?
It was a pear tree.
Oh, it's a pear tree, okay.
No, no, not a pear, I believe it was a cleveland.
Oh, it's, well, same.
I think would be a good idea, given a little bit of time that I take, what like I did with the homes, go along the streetscape and take pictures of the trees in the right-of-way, so if something like this comes up again, we can say, hey, this was a tree yesterday. This is what you guys chopped today. Not good. You know, right now, we have a hard time defining on what they've cut, what they didn't cut. Like Zach said, having an arborist would be a good idea now just to say, hey, their trees, you know, you might as well chop the thing down, they cut too much out of it.
Yeah, I photographed six trees that they cut and it is abundantly clear what they did. I mean, it's not even, I mean, it is empirical evidence, so.
Unfortunately, what he says, they have to follow our G and E's rules, 10-foot either side, 15-foot above.
Well, we're losing trees, you know, so we, there's more than, you know, and I'm glad they're at least trying to have some, you know, mitigation for tree at Jefferson, but there's far more. You know, but we can, we can talk offline about that. And, you know, keep the board, you know, posted on how that's moving forward.
There is a question in chat about the trees, if you, as a board would like to entertain it.
Sure.
Okay, Christina Muley asked, will the village also be advocating for other trees aside from Main Street? Stonegate was scalped last week by Arnold.
Yeah, we'll look at all of them, absolutely. This is all part of our village tree canopy. It's a big deal.
I will, I'm gonna call tomorrow, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna suspend Arnold. If, if the board is okay with it, I'm gonna ask them to stop till we can take an assessment of what they've done and see if they're leaving the proper people that should be doing this.
Any thoughts from the board? Yeah, Lilly?
Yes, the ones that were cut on Stonegate, I thought that was done by our G and E as well, no? And I thought that's what, that was where they were to replace. Where, where was the one that you were talking about first, Zach?
Yes, yeah.
The one that was cut down to the ground was on East Jefferson at the corner of South Main.
Okay, alright.
Those, the trees in Stonegate, those were cut down by the same contractor that is doing the work for it.
That's what I thought. Okay, so maybe that's a place for a replacement?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about. Zach, yes?
Those are all private trees on Stonegate. Just putting it out there.
Okay.
Yeah, but how, how does the board feel about me though, kinda taking, I don't know, saying we don't want any more cut in the village, should we assess what's been done? And, and really walk with them and find out what their plan is to do anymore?
Yeah. I'm fine with that. Any other thoughts from the board? Yes, Justin?
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I just wonder, I don't know what basis we have in our code for stopping it. I think that perhaps our G and E has been doing this because of power outage problems and in, in response to that, to make sure that we, we don't have other issues with power outages. But I agree with this, and Steve, if you think that we've got grounds to do this, let's at least stop it so that we can take a look and, and discuss what our options might be.
Well, I think it's a realistic approach that Steve's saying, you know, because they're already, it's pretty clear they're owning up to what they already did on Jefferson. And so I think it's pretty clear our G and E as well understands there's gonna be tremendous pushback. You know, we love our trees and we, we care about them, so I think we need a little bit more information, as Steve said, about how they are really gonna proceed and how we ended up with, they're not even trimmed, they're hacked. They're just hacked, you know?
You go on down, down on West Jefferson and look at those trees along the backside of the high school area, it's pretty sad, actually. Alright, I have one more item, kind of a request to the board. We are supposed to start weekly testing on the 15th, which is a Friday. I'm requesting that the board change that to the 18th, which is a Monday. It would seem to make more sense to me to test on a Monday morning than a Friday.
No, actually, I think that was the intention. I think maybe the 15th was just sort of giving enough of a timeframe. I think, you know, potentially that's realistic. Because we had all spoken, you know, discussed actually as a board about everybody who opted to go for the testing, that they would test before the beginning of the workweek, before they came into the building. Is there any other, any other thoughts from the board on that? I mean, that's my recollection. Anybody recall differently?
No. Would we need to make another motion to change that date, or was the October 15th just a suggested date? I mean, would, did we vote on the 15th as the date, the start date?
We did. We can just vote to amend it right now. I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we amend our previous, previous vote to allow for the situation that Steve has brought to our attention and begin the testing on October 18th to coincide with the beginning of the workweek.
Is there a second?
Second?
All to go?
Okay, trustee Lightkeb?
Aye.
Trustee Lanpher?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, and one, one last thing that I neglected to put in my report. I was able to go through and do more research and close out 21 older permits, so that now 2019, 2020, there were only three open permits left from 2020. All of 2018, 19 are all completely cleared and off the books.
That's fantastic, wow. Thank you. That's, that's good work, Steve, thank you.
I hate, I hate old work to be sitting around.
I'm with you. Okay, okay, thank you, thank you very much, Steve. Are there any other quick questions for Steve, or can we move along? Okay. Next up, DPW, please, Zach?
Hi, everybody. Sorry for my report coming in late. I hope everybody had a chance to read it. It's been a pretty hectic two weeks and I was finally able to find some time this afternoon to write up a report. There are a few things that I do have to discuss on there, but I'll see if you guys have questions first.
I apologize, Zach, I didn't get your report. If it came in after four o'clock, I didn't see it. I'm sorry. But it's okay, it's okay. You know, if there's, if I have a question, I will, I will email you about it.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Lilly. Yeah, you know, just, just to give you all a heads up, we had two people in on Friday, you know, covering DPW, you know, people out sick and healing, you know, there was just been a lot going on, and I think thanks even for writing up the report. I'm, makes you could do it. I was expecting an oral report, but much appreciated. So, you know, I appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. And a time.
I have two questions that came in through the State Street neighbors and then just a random sidewalk question. And I did read, I did let everyone know that you had a, a short staff the last couple, couple weeks and it's, and to, to please have a little bit of understanding. But the first question is about the speed century. The neighbors on State Street wanted to know where it went and if it was gonna come back.
Yes, it's going through the roundtable now. After it leaves State Street, I move it to East Jefferson in the westbound lane. And it goes to West Jefferson in the eastbound lane by Sunset, and then it moves to East Jefferson in the eastbound lane by Ramp. So that's where it currently is sitting right now. Next, it'll be going back to State Street in the westbound lane by the village line.
Okay.
And so, Monday of next week.
Monday of next week.
Cycle through, your, excuse me, one sec, so you sort of, that's sort of the cycle of how it, it's moving around through the village?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just so everybody's clear on that, yeah.
I told Art that I would get back to him, so can you just repeat which direction it's gonna be? So I, he likes very clear answers.
Yep, it'll, it'll be at the village line by the sign on State Street in the eastbound lane, starting Monday.
Okay.
If, we don't know, yeah, starting Monday, if everything goes as planned.
Okay, perfect. And then we have more coming and at that point, we think one might stay there, or we haven't really decided that yet?
Yeah, I don't think we've determined locations for the permanent placement speed centuries, but the two portable ones, those should be in sometime mid-November. And then I'll, I'll, either, working with you guys, I'll create a route for them to move along.
Okay, great. I love the, the cycle. I love that they move around. So thank you for staying on top of that. The second, the second thing is the sidewalk repairs. I know that's, this is usually the time of year that that happens, and there've been some concerns that it's taking longer than usual from some residents on message boards and whatnot and social media, and I just, I, again, I reached out to the people I knew and let them know that you all have had quite a slog and that you're short-staffed, so, but is there a general update on the sidewalks?
Yeah, between weather, staffing issues, and just concrete availability, it's been pretty difficult to get this one done. Right now, most of the concrete is going out to the new Amazon warehouse and Amazon is paying an additional, I think I heard, $40 over the 130 or so dollars per cubic yard for concrete, and they're pouring about 1,000 yards a day. So the majority of the concrete seems to be had in that way, so it's, it's been difficult to get in truck. Who, also, the concrete companies are short-staffed, so they don't have the drivers to get us. So it's just, it's, it's been everything that's compounded and made this difficult. Because we're short-staffed and short on time at this point, I did hire a contractor to come through and he's saying in the next 10 days, he should be there to be able to pour. So providing that he can get concrete, hopefully in a couple weeks' time, we'll have the sidewalk sorted out in front of Del Monte.
Wait, that's the one that we've been getting a lot of questions about. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, I'd like to just add something. Zach's really been trying to stay on this. Getting concrete is, is beyond what I would even have thought about. I did also speak with the Nice Dot crew that's doing the improvements right now on South Main and on State. They're having a difficult time sourcing concrete for Nice Dot projects all over, so it's not just unique, you know, to us, it's really regional at this point, and actually probably beyond our region.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, lot, it's multifactorial, as we say.
Well, we appreciate the work. Thank you, Zach, and to your team too, for, Joanie's still on, I don't think she is, but.
I'll pass all this along to the crew.
Anything else, Zach? Did you want to talk about? You know, we had a couple other items we were, had discussed earlier, and I know you wanted to bring some of those up.
Yeah, a couple of the, the items that I included on my report were the repairs to Truck 2, which is a 2008 International 7400. That's our main large plow truck that we use in the wintertime and for leaf pickup. We had to replace the hydraulic lift cylinder that lifts the dump body on it, and that was, it wasn't, it, it wasn't something that we were planning on, but upon further inspection of the condition of the cylinder and the piston inside of it, we just saw a fit that it was a good time to replace before we got into inclement weather and the season where we're using it a lot. So that was a $4,392 expense. But it's safe, it's put together, and it should last for a while. The Case 321F loader, last year I had put in for, for tire replacement for $8,000. I was able to find tires and have them mounted for $5,396. We do have more work that needs to be done to the loader and has to replace the cutting edges on the bucket, and the bucket seized onto the boom arms. So there's a lot of labor involved with getting the bucket freed up and then also to remove and replace the, the free cutting edges on the bucket. I was quoted, it's, it's a specialized bucket because we were having issues. I don't know if any of you actually remember this, because this is going back like four years now. The original loader that we are, that we had was replaced by this loader because that loader kept having bucket issues where it was falling off of the loader itself while we were using. So we went with a different style bucket that I think seems to be just, it, it's a case-specific product, and so we had to go through case to get these cutting edges. But I was quoted $4,156.94 to replace these cutting edges and, and free up the bucket. So I guess I'm asking for approval. I know it's under what it would be necessary to ask for formal approval from the board for this, but I'm asking for it anyway, so we can replace the cutting edges on the bucket and get it operational.
Well, we also have a savings of about 3,000 on the tires that can be directed towards that, so I support that. We need, we need to make sure things are safe and usable.
Okay.
Yeah, Justin?
Yeah, so Zach, just a quick question. Is this a 2004 truck that you're talking about?
The truck was a 2008 International. What I'm currently talking about, though, is the front-wheel loader that we used.
Gotcha, okay. So that's more recent, so it's not, not up for replacement in, in the near future?
Correct, that is a 2017.
Gotcha, okay. Thanks.
So this essentially is, is maintenance, really, to get those edges taken care of?
They're, they're wear items on the bucket. The biggest thing is just the labor that goes along with them. The metal's not cheap either, and especially with today's market, everything's expensive, but they're welded on and bolted on, so there's a lot of labor to cut the welds loose and then re-weld the new ones back on. And that's why it's been expensive.
Well, I think, I think we need to do this and make sure that we have efficient and workable equipment that's safe. I'll entertain a motion to approve the expenditure.
So moved.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lanpher?
Lanpher, aye.
Trustee Lightkeb?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. I'll, as soon as I can get an actual figure, it's probably not gonna be until the work is done, because it all depends on how much labor actually goes into this, but this is what they're estimating it to be, is the $4,156. But it's possible that it could go up a little bit more, or it could be less if they're able to create everything easier than expected. Wood Creek Pump Station. We, we're over there once a week to inspect it. It handles all the sewage flow from Wood Creek and pushes it up to State Street. It handles a lot of, a lot of sewers, a lot of water, and also a lot of grease, and the grease tends to accumulate in that area. And, and it can cause problems. One of, there are two pumps that sit in the pump, the pump station, and one of them has an agitator that turns the water to help break down whatever sitting stagnant on the surface. The agitator failed, and I had a company come out and pull, they use a crane to pull the pumps out of the 25-foot well. And they pulled it up, found that there was a problem. The agitator can be rebuilt. They are looking for the parts right now, and they're gonna get me an official quote as soon as they get it. I asked them just to go ahead and repair it, because it's something that's necessary, and this is considered an emergency situation to make sure that the pump station operates as it's supposed to. Seeing as how only one of the pumps had the agitator, I also asked them to get me a quote for adding another agitator to the second pump, in case the one fails, and there's also a, a second one to, to back it up. He did say that it was about $4,300 to replace it. This is all funded through the sewer fund, which it's, it's pretty well-funded, so I don't see what that really, you know, hurting the budget at all. But it's, it's also something that will help us, you know, with any issues that we have in the future with the, the pump station. Another thing that I'm doing with Wood Creek is exploring different options to bring it up to date in terms of technology with the control panels. It's 25 years old at this point, and I don't want to say that it's obsolete, it's not, but there's a lot better technology right now to monitor all the functions of the pump station to help with the maintenance that goes along with it. I just wanted to give, put this in your, in your guys', you're just so, you know, I'll, I'll present more as I get some of these quotes back on, on different parts and different ideas to bring it up to date, but yeah, that's, that's where I'm at with that.
One, one last, one quick thing. So you're thinking that the, the new agitator pumps are roughly 4,300?
Yes.
Okay, do you need anything from the board?
Not at this point. Wait till I get a, no.
Give us a firm quote, okay.
And we'll go from there, so I don't expect it's gonna be anytime in the next, before the next meeting, so.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know where you were, because I know it's a little dicey over there.
Yep, this is just kind of a, a long, uh, far-out plan.
Okay. Well, that's great, and then thanks for keeping us posted.
Yep. Um, New York, uh, State Department of Transportation private project that's going on ninety-six and sixty-four and, and thirty-one. There's a resolution that, uh, they are asking for us to sign. Sounds like they will, uh, have to relocate, um, some of the sanitary sewer mains. We don't have an idea of which ones they're talking about at this point. Scott Harder had asked if, uh, if we could set up a meeting, I believe, um, to kind of pick their brains to find out what they're talking about before we send the resolution for them to be able to move forward with it. Um, I believe I had copied, uh, Elisa and Renee on this also, so. Um, Scott Harder and Jeff are also aware of it. Um, one of the things that they will be doing is replacing, um, if we can provide manhole frames and covers for all the sanitary sewers, which is great. Um, it's a lot of work, and if their contractor's already in there doing the work for us, all we have to do is just supply the material for them to be able to do it. The manhole frames and covers at this point are probably, you know, fifty years old. So it's, it's a good time to do it if we can cover the expense. I got quotes for two different styles. One is a self-leveling frame, um, and, uh, cover. They're very expensive, they're six hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece. We would have to supply twenty-seven of them. That comes to sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, or we go with what is, uh, always been used, and that's just a solid cover and frame. And that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece, which would be three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Again, this would be, um, a sewer's, uh, sewer fund expense. But.
Quick question about the, those manhole covers, um, those are, so through the years, they sort of get, they depress a little bit, and I know they, they cause problems for, um, people on bikes, for drivers, um, how often do you have to go in there and re-level those? When, when you don't have those self-leveling ones?
We, we typically won't do it until we're revisiting a road unless, um, we've put so many surface treatments on the road that it's become more or less a pothole. And that creates more issues, um.
Yes, and how long does that last? Like, if you put, if we don't get those self-leveling ones, how long till it starts to?
It's really hard to say. I can't really put a timeframe on it, because, you know, it kind of depends on, um, you know, the traffic that where it's placed in the road, the traffic that's driving over it, um, a lot of different factors with it, but I'm, I'm sure it'd be fine for, you know, a good ten years, I think, before it'd have to be even looked at. Unless there was something wrong with the, the brickwork in the barrel that supports the manhole frame and, and cover. Um, if that starts to settle, which is kind of strange, then you have to get in there and start doing restructuring of the, uh.
So what is the lo- what is the longer-term durability then of a self-le- leveling? Because you, you're, you're essentially avoiding labor to go back in and keep trying to le- level, so what's, what's the long-term?
It's, it's hard, it's a fairly new product to me, and I can't really, I, I have not seen it working yet, and the salesman's going to bring me out sometime to show me the functionality of it, and he also wants to come through and take a look and see, um, what areas would, it would probably work in the best. Um, but it's basically for surface treatment, so you just go in there, you basically lift up, uh, the lid to the new surface height, and pack a little bit of, uh, asphalt underneath, and it holds true, so there's, um, there's a little, there's, there's a little bit of room for adjustment, but it's, it's not going to be to the point where you'll never have to revisit it.
Potentially, we could do a mix of some self-leveling where it seems to be more appropriate. And then the rest, I mean, I, I just throwing that out there.
Yeah, no, that's, that's probably, um, a, a good possibility. Um, like I said, when I am able to meet up with the salesman, um, I'll get a better idea.
We could also ask Kale and, and Josh the next time we meet with them, uh, Mayor Plummer and Zach, I think you're included in the next meeting too. Just, they, they do this, these projects all the time, and I know, know the longevity.
Okay.
Lily, did you have your hand up?
I, I did. I was going to suggest what, uh, what Renee just mentioned, and that was perhaps, uh, similar to the, the, um, speech century, where we had the, um, representative come and address the board so that we knew exactly what the two products were that are being considered and might be a combination of the two, as you indicated. But I think, as Zach pointed out earlier, we do have, um, a comfortable cushion as far as our sewer fund is concerned. And so we want to make certain that we choose the best product with a long run for, for the village. And that, that, so what you just suggested, I think, would be an excellent idea to educate ourselves, so we make a, a good decision.
Okay.
Great. Okay, Zach, anything else?
Um, Through referral, we had, um, someone come in to interview for the open position at the DPW. Um, we did sit down with her, she's a very pleasant, her, uh, her name was Danielle Reamer. Or, I'm sorry, Realer. And we're considering, um, you know, how she would work out here, and I think I'm going to, uh, bring her in sometime to meet the crew and see how the crew would feel, um, see if personalities would, would match or clash, and go from there, but, um, I think we're trying to establish where we would be with, uh, a, a minimum, uh, the starting rate for, for new employees at this point too, and I think, uh, following suit with how we have done in the past with an MOU, um, bringing them up past, uh, with the current union contractors app for, for starting rate, um, whatever you visit it to. Um, we have not posted the position publicly yet, but we're going to, just been a little bit crazy lately, um, but we're cannot getting a new employee in here.
Yeah, we, well, we spoke about, you know, the starting rates, um, and where they were, I believe in our last meeting, am I correct? Um, and I know, Zach, you, you've had some thoughts about that as well. And I do think, you know, um, it just was an opportunity to, through a referral, to interview someone, the posting's still going up, but I think this board really has to make a decision this evening, um, you know, about moving forward with, um, somebody, you know, at an entry-level position. Um, I think the rate was thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents, and I just found out today that, um, son of an attorney has, has, his, his, uh, son's in a part-time job at Chick-fil-A for eighteen to nineteen dollars an hour. So I think we have to think through where we're going with this and be realistic about how we can attract employees. And, uh, for us though, as well, it's, you know, not just an hourly rate, we also offer very good benefits, so there is in addition to whatever we want to bump this up to, um, that's also a consideration. So Zach, there was some, yeah, Lily?
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were fin- I, I didn't mean to.
No, no, no.
I think it would be really helpful if Zach, um, or, or Dorothea could give us a workup as to how it will affect the other employees that are, uh, undercut, with, with the union, because I think it will affect others that have been here longer, and so if, if the board has all of that information, then we can make a decision. I, I am certainly in favor of offering, uh, at least a fifteen-dollar minimum wage, and that will affect also um, other employees that have been here for a longer period of time, that they also would have to be, um, elevated, and we would need to look at our budget and see how that, that works out with the DPW budget for the year. I'd like, I'd like that information.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, some of that already has been addressed, but we, we can circle back. Um, I did have an additional conversation with our labor attorney today, um, about that, and we also, um, Zach, you and I both have spoken with Mary. As you know, Brad Van Bordel retired at a much higher, uh, rate. Um, so those funds are now unused and can certainly go towards, um, an additional realistic hourly rate for a new employee coming in. Um, Zach, I know you have some thoughts on that as well, because you, you, we, you've also been part of this discussion.
Uh, yeah, the last few employees that I've brought in here, we've brought them in, um, above what the, the union contract is. At this point, everybody else, uh, working for the DPW is well above what we're proposing for a starting rate for a new employee that is not, um, does not have the background or the skills, just someone green without a CDL license, so it wouldn't be encroaching on to those other employees' pay. Um, but also at the same time, I feel like those employees' pay should be revisited and considered.
And am I, am I correct, Zach, that, um, your last seven hires have, have happened this way? In other words, you know, is brought in above what the, the rate was, the union, you know, we're already reaching out to the union, just so you know. Um, and, uh, our labor attorney, you know, foresees no issues per se at all. Um, you know, within the context of maybe what we're looking at, because it is a new employee without a CDL, so, uh, they would come in at a lower rate than, you know, the two more recently hired employees, so. You know, I think at this point, we should entertain a range potentially between sixteen to seventeen dollars an hour, perhaps with, um, you know, revisiting that in another six months. And, um, I also would like the board to, uh, at least consider, when we hit our next budget cycle, about really taking a look at, um, our pay rates for DPW, so we don't have to keep circling back and overriding what has already been decided and coming up with memorandums of understanding, that we, we really take a look at, you know, the type of commitment we want to make to recruiting people and retaining people. Any other thoughts from the board? I mean, I, I think at this point, um, I think it would make sense if the board would agree that we, you know, authorize our labor attorney um, to look at, uh, creating a memorandum of understanding, that we do reach out to the union, and that we do entertain, uh, recruiting any new employee coming in at the level Jack, uh, Zach suggested, uh, between sixteen and seventeen dollars an hour. We have the funds.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Uh, okay, uh, Trustee Lightgum.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye. Okay, great. Okay, we can move forward on that. Um, Zach, what was your, any, any other item that you wanted to talk about, perhaps the on-call phone? I know you were concerned about that.
Uh, next week I am going to be going to the Nikon conference. I'll be gone, uh, Sunday through Wednesday. I'll be back on Thursday. Um, with Doug being out, he is my foreman, I have no one else to rely on here, um, who would be, uh, on-call. Outside of my phone ringing and trying to get a hold of someone here, um. So, a while back, we had established an on-call phone for, uh, for the foreman to monitor, uh, any kind of calls that would come in outside of normal working hours. Um, Doug being gone, I'd like to be able to pass that along to either Joan, Jason, or Mike to, um, to monitor the on-call. Um, emergency calls that would come in after hours, but, um, we don't have anything established for, um, incentive to want to take that extra responsibility. So, I'm opening the floor for discussion on that.
Well, I know, um, we had a discussion with Mary just about the finances of that and how it would work, and, um, and Zach and I had a, had a discussion, so I'd like to, you know, uh, just share with the board what the thoughts were, is that there should be some type of a stipend uh, to cover, you know, those, those five days really, of when, um, you have total responsibility around the clock uh, for picking up that phone and answering the call. Um, and in addition, they get overtime as well. But, um, Zach and I were considering, um, the, the amount of a hundred dollars, you know, to say, if you, if you covered, you get a hundred dollars more for that time period in your paycheck in addition to your overtime.
Yeah, so if it'd be for five days, that would be, um, twenty dollars a day. Anyway, so e- even if we established it at that point, um, just to kind of keep it going as a base, uh, benchmark.
Yeah, because evidently, there's, there's, there hasn't been a policy on this or anything, and that's something maybe, you know, I mean, right now, we're in a little bit of a time crunch, but just to get us through this particular period, but maybe, you know, we should bring this back to the board to really kind of set up a policy about this, because I'm sure, you know, it could happen again, so. Yeah, Justin.
Um, are, are those employees that we're talking about covered with union contracts, and what do the union contracts say about on-call responsibilities?
I don't think there's anything in the contract that says anything about on-call responsibilities, other than being available for emergency situations.
So, in, in essence, that is covered to that extent that they, it is part of their contract to be available. So, um, I think really, this is above and beyond anything that's in the contract to just say, you're the person who picks up the phone, and we'll give you a hundred dollars, you know, for the time period and your overtime. Yeah, I mean, the labor, the, the labor attorney was fine with it, you know.
Okay.
Fairly standard. And I believe it has happened in the past, I think before, I think Zach, even before your time, I think this is how it was handled. Yeah. Any other thoughts from the board?
I, I have, I have no problem with that. I think that it's, um, given the level of responsibility in the twenty-four hour, uh, around-the-clock responsibility of keeping your phone on and being aware. I think it's, it would be a, a nice gesture. And I would agree with doing that.
Okay, yep, Justin.
Uh, so, just to, to be clear, so this is a limited program. While we are short-staffed in the, in the DPW, and it's not a part of the employment contract, it's sort of a one-off thing that we're doing, um, when people who generally have, uh, on-call responsibilities are not available. Um, and I'm just wondering how this transitions into, uh, um, you know, if, if the employee is promoted, if they're, they happen to have more responsibilities longer term, and they take on more regular on-call responsibilities. Um, is, is this, you know, I'm not concerned about the hundred dollars necessarily, but how does this go into longer-term employment contracts where this is an expected part of the job with an increased salary?
This is a unique situation. This is a one-of right now, because typically the foreman would be on-call. Uh, the foreman's not available, he's home recovering, so, um, this is a unique situation, but I do think we need to circle back to the board and maybe, you know, come up with something a little more definitive, and I think you raised some good points with that. Yeah. Are we in agreement on this? Okay, all right, all good. I don't think we need him, I mean, it's, it's a hundred dollars, but, you know, I think it's just important that we all understand what's going on here. Okay, uh, Zach, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, okay, yeah. Oh, I thought you was asking a question, okay.
No, I said, thanks, Zach.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, let's see, you know what, we're gonna, um, hold off on the treasurer's, um, and village clerk report. Uh, we do have a public hearing. This is forty-four North Main Street. Marina, did you want to read the text for that?
Um, that's, that's the same stuff that's on my desk, um, I can look for it there, but, um.
If you give me a moment, I have it.
Yeah, Lily has it. Oh, awesome.
Give me a moment. I just have to find the, the page. To say I've done things the old-fashioned way and printed it out. I have the public notice. Under the desk where, okay. Notice of public hearing for the Village of Pittsburgh. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held before the Village of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees at a meeting on Tuesday, October the twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, at seven P M. at the Village Hall, twenty-one North Main Street, Pittsburgh, to consider an application for a short-term business permit to be located at forty-four North Main Street by David Jewett to conduct outdoor sales of Christmas trees, wreaths, and crafts. If the meeting is unable to be held due to the coronavirus pandemic, it will be held on Tuesday, October twelfth, at seven fifteen per video conferencing link identified. Pursuant to the state legislator chapter, chapter four-one-seven of the laws of twenty-twenty-one, the Village Hall will be closed to the public during the Board of Trustees meeting. The members of the Village Board will be present at Village Hall or participating from their respective homes for this public hearing via video. or participating from their respective homes for this public hearing via video conference. If a board member is participating from home, that home will be closed to the public as well for the reasons stated above. The public will be able to participate in the public hearing via comments submitted through the video conferencing link identified on the village website and Facebook page.
Thank you. Okay, um, is there someone here to speak to this application? Is, is, is Mr. Jewett here this evening? Or Steve, if you have anything to say, or?
I do not see him in the attendees.
Okay, okay. Alrighty, um, Steve, is, is there anything you'd like to, to, to speak to regarding the application before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, application is the same thing. Mr. Jewett's been here for, I believe, fourteen years doing the same exact thing, same setup, same location. Never been a problem or a complaint regards to his activity. Actually, everybody's always really appreciative of the fact that he has the trees right in the village. He's pretty much a staple of the community for the last many years.
Okay, is there any, any comment from the board? Before we open the hear, yes, Justin?
Uh, just, just really briefly, I, I was on the planning board when we approved this for a couple of years too. It's not a big deal, I, I think it's a great, um, a great thing to do with the, uh, over at the dairy. There, there's been some confusion about who handles this. And I did get an email from the chair of the, uh, the zoning board of appeals. We kind of have redundant code in, in our, our village laws at this point about who handles this sort of thing. It seems like maybe you'd be slightly better over the Z, uh, at the ZBA side, but I don't know if there's a perfect answer on this one. I just think that this is something that we need to go back and address. And, and perhaps longer term, I mean, personally, I would just say, make this allowed by right somehow for short-term Christmas tree sales, because I don't think that anybody really cares that much. Uh, and it hasn't been an issue. But, you know, we could certainly get everybody's thoughts on that and, and, uh, see what makes sense. But I, I just wanted to call attention to this fact that it seems like this is an area where we can improve the laws.
Thank, thank you for that. Yeah, Steve, sure.
Yeah, I, I'm completely in agreement with Justin in regards to, you know, something like this, a farmer's market, things that don't change. I, I think we could, you know, the village could come up with a way to approve them as long as there's no change and no issue with a recurring yearly event.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think it's all very much worth considering. I, I, I agree with that. Any other comments from the board? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second?
Okay, trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Lightgum?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
I, I just realized, Mayor Plummer, you actually didn't make the motion. You were asking someone else to make the motion. So do we need to go back and redo that? Because I will make.
How about if I amended and say I made the motion?
Okay, great.
And you seconded it.
All right.
How about if we do that?
Okay.
Crisis averted, all right.
So amended.
Yes, thank you. So the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak to this agenda item? And please state your name and address. And Marina can just take a look to see if there's any hands raised or. Please raise your hand.
Yep, you can raise your hand or type into the Q and A.
I've got a minute here, just in case. I think everybody knows the drill with the Christmas trees, though. I mean, it's. Hey? Nope, no one?
No, I don't see any.
Okay, alrighty.
Oh. Nope.
Okay, all right. Well, everybody loves the Christmas trees. Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgum?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye. Okay, so it's back to the board. Uh, any other further discussion from the board or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented.
I can't raise my hand because you can't see me. Uh, for some reason, my video is blocked.
Oh, can you unblock Jeff, please?
Yeah, let me make you a comment.
Wait a minute, hold on, are you sure you want to unblock me?
Of course we do. The rest of us had to, Jeff. I was on here alone for a long time because no one else's camera was working. All right.
But we can always block you again.
Please do. I, I mean, it's your, it's your pleasure. I would suggest, trustee Lightgum, that you add, uh, with the same conditions approved for this use in the past.
Uh, so moved. Um, I, I move that we, uh, approve the proposal with the same conditions that have been added in the past.
Okay, we do have a hand raised. Um, I'm gonna allow David L. to talk.
Uh, we did close the public hearing. So, uh.
I will, I will second that motion so that we can now have a discussion.
We need to bring it back to the board. Yeah, that's, the board would have to allow that.
And I would agree, I would agree that David L. may speak.
Okay.
Oh, David L. is David Jewett, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, David.
The applicant would like to speak, yes.
Yeah.
All right, you may speak, David.
Hello?
Looks like he's unmuted.
Oh dear, we can't hear you. Should we unblock him for a minute or I have him? Unblock him for a minute and then let him speak, you know, it'd be nice to hear from him.
Yeah, let me, um, let me see if I can like re-hit him. All right. Yeah, I don't see anything barring you from speaking on our end.
Are you muted on your end?
I don't see his, him as muted.
Right here.
In the chat, he said he doesn't have audio, so I doesn't, I don't know if that means he doesn't have audio capability or if he's just muted.
That might be it.
Okay. In the, if it helps at all, in the bottom left corner of your screen on Zoom, it will ask if you want to add audio. You might have to do that.
Let's see if that works.
Could we have him type in whatever it is he wanted to say?
Plan B. Whoa, excuse me, I have to get a cat down from something. Any? I think.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Oh dear. Um, well, we we were going in a good direction, if that helps, Dave. Well, I think we do need to move things along. I was hoping he could type something in for us if he desired to do so. Is there any additional discussion from the board or is there a motion? We have the amendment, right? Any discussion on that? Okay, then let's call, oh, Jeff? Unmute?
I was gonna suggest that we amend the motion, leave it open. You know, if he has any additions, he can come back, but we'll approve it as with the prior conditions unless there's something where he wanted to say that changes something and he would have the right to come back without making an additional application.
Because we still have, we're still within a good timeframe for this.
I think so.
To do this. So I just want to make sure, you know, we're not giving him too tight a timeframe if we keep it open.
Uh, so moved as.
I, I didn't mean to keep, I didn't mean to keep it open. Uh, I meant to, I meant leave, leave the application open for if he wanted to come back and address anything the board might have missed in what I assume is the approval.
So we can approve it and if he needs to amend it in any way.
Right.
Okay, now that's, that's a clarification for all of us. Yes, Steve?
Um, Dave said he's trying to get in on his phone.
Oh, okay. Operator's standing by.
Steve, can you just ask him if he, what, what's going on, why, if he's got concerns or anything?
It just, all they said was, can you type? He said, yes, trying to get it set up on my phone. Then somebody else put in, Dave just promised to bring Ted with a smiley face. And then Dave types LOL. I don't know what's going on.
It's the dog, his dog. He is dog.
Hey.
Hey, Dave, is there a problem of any kind? Can you, can you hear us?
Well, why don't, I, 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 I think we should move along and, and, you know, we have a motion on the floor and Jeff was right, our attorney is correct. Certainly, if Dave wants to amend it in any way, shape, or form, he has the time to do so.
Okay, and it was seconded.
Yeah, so. I just typed him, problem, Dave with a question mark. So I just, you know, if he can really type, I mean, if he doesn't say anything back, I think that's a great suggestion to prove it. And if he wants to change, he has to come back.
We're, we're, we're on the precipice of a vote here.
On the edge of our seat.
Need a second.
I, I, I seconded, yeah.
Hanging on the edge here.
Says he's in on his phone, but I don't see him. So I'll go ahead and.
Follow the vote and Dave know that you can certainly stop back in and, you know, speak with Steve if you need to amend the application in any way.
Okay. Alrighty, trustee Lightgum?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. The Christmas trees are moving forward. All right, um. Okay, next item. Gabians at forty-four Rand Place. Um, you're gonna, Marina, please let Scott Harder in.
Um, Scott is here. He, he's unmuted.
Scott, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yep. And you look great.
So, back to Zoom meetings, I guess.
Uh, yeah, back to Zoom for the moment. I know this has been, uh, you know, really kind of a work in progress here. I'll just give my quick update, my little bit to add, and then I know Scott can help flesh some things out here. I did meet, uh, the weekend before last, um, over the weekend with both of the property owners involved at, uh, the Rand Creek by forty, forty-quart Rand, right there at the base of the hill. And we, and I believe you got, received that in your packets, uh, the estimates that Scott gave us for the work to be done on our side of the creek. And the concern is, is that there still will be a really significant erosion on the other side of the creek. Um, and while that is on private property, uh, the issue for us as a village is that we have utilities and sewer laterals that run directly under the tree stump through that creek that tie into our municipal facilities. So, um, there was some concern over that. So for an additional five thousand dollars, the other side of the creek can be addressed and Scott will be able to speak to that in a minute. And the discussion that I had with both of the property owners is that the village would possibly pick up half of that five thousand, but as property owners, um, we would like them to pick up the other half. So they would, we would pay an additional twenty-five hundred. In addition to that, um, they agreed to that, but also in addition to that, we would then have oversight of both sides of the creek where we did that work, which is to our advantage because we want to make sure that that is properly maintained going forward as it does tie in directly into our village system. So, um, and Zach may want to add to that, but I know, you know, Scott's really been working on this as well. So this evening, um, really what's before the board is, uh, to be able to move forward on this, we also clearly will have to initiate seeker. Jeff maybe wants to speak to that, but Scott, maybe you just want to pick up a little bit where I'm leaving off.
Yes, probably, um, some people remember this project goes back quite a ways. I think tonight's kind of a culmination of at least two, maybe three years of looking at the situation and finally developing some plans for improvement, detailing those plans, meeting with the resident, with the neighbors, uh, the two affected neighbors primarily. Developing easements, um, easement legal descriptions, speaking with Jeff on the easement agreement. A variety of things. Zach and I have both visited the site multiple times. The situation is that once upon a time Gabians were installed along the street side of the creek. Those Gabians are failing, they are disintegrating and falling into the creek and washing away. Uh, so the area has been posted for safety purposes. And this project is intended to replace the failing Gabian area and also do a little bit across the way in the zone where we have a tree that encroached into the creek and created a lot of the situation that I just described. So far, the tree has been removed, but not the root system. And the reason for that is we have concerns that the root system may be intertwined with the sanitary sewer that goes and connects into Rand Place. So this project, um, uh, is small but tricky. And assuming the board wants to go forward with the project, I believe that you folks would need to, um, agree to provide or accept the easements. Do seeker tonight if possible. Um, if, if that is in agreement with the board, then we would propose to send the plans to the DEC for a joint permit review with the Army Corps of Engineers because Rand Creek is a protected stream. They typically take, uh, uh, at least a month to review such a project. And if we get their concurrence with what we've shown, um, we could put the thing out to bid shortly thereafter. However, with winter approaching, I'm not sure if it would be better to wait until spring or when the, when the best time would be. So that's my overview.
Okay, yeah, yes, Lily.
Thank you. I would have a, a, a few questions, so bear with me. Hi Scott, how are you?
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Uh, I have a question regarding, uh, I was, uh, on-site with you and Zach and the, one of the property owners and the building inspector. And at the time, we discussed the tunnel, I'm gonna call it the tunnel, that goes underneath the driveway and the size of that tunnel and how it might be affecting the fail, the fact that the Gabians failed in such a short amount of time. And how going forward, if that is not rectified, how the village might anticipate another Gabian failure after spending, what we're anticipating about thirty thousand dollars for this repair, only to have it fail once again. So I was wondering if you might be able to speak to us regarding, um, what I'm, what I'm talking about is that the tunnel, because it comes, becomes narrow and then that forces the water into a smaller space and it shoots out the other side when there is, when there's a, an event, a storm event and like a, like a high-pressure hose. And so that, that, that sort of exacerbated the situation. Could you speak to that, Scott?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Well, I think the first thing I should mention is that we're not proposing to replace the Gabians with Gabians. Um, actually, the, the DEC won't allow us to do that anymore.
Okay.
So the treatment is really a heavy stone, uh, treatment. Gabians, as you may know, are essentially hand-sized or small. hand size or smaller stones that are placed in baskets that are stacked into the bank and, and they've always been a pretty good low cost solution. Um, but um, the situation in the village is not uncommon and the DEC recognizes that. And when I spoke with them recently, they indicated that they're not approving any projects that have Gabians such as the ones we're discussing. So the, the treatment that we're proposing is acceptable to the DEC uh, by way of, um, erosion control and stabilization of the bank. Um, re- regarding the, the bridge, the tunnel, if you will, um, yes, it, it does kind of constrain the flows coming through it and, and they do tend to jet out. Um, the problem that we're seeing based on our analysis and we analyze the, um, the flow of the creek immediately downstream of there. Um, the, the flow is, is likewise restricted by the encroaching tree and which has, at least the upper part has been removed, but the tree ball, if you will, the root ball has encroached considerably out into the, the creek area. And that's also like the tunnel, uh, the, the bridge, that's also restricting the flow. Once that's removed, that will open it up and our calculations show that the velocity resulting from that will be acceptable. And the stone treatment that we're providing um, on the neighbor's side that they requested, that will be an additional level of protection um, to ensure that at least immediately thereafter, we don't have a problem. There may be other areas further on down in Rand Creek that are more constrained. Uh, the more it gets constrained, the more we get those high velocity flows. But doing this widens the, um, the creek from bank to bank, so the velocity goes down. Coming out of the bridge, however, the velocity is higher. That's correct. And we noticed that what has happened in that regard is that the uh, the bridge has kind of, um, made itself deeper with time. We see that it has eroded the creek, uh, bottom over the years to the extent that it's probably, Zach has seen it as I have. Uh, more specifically, it's probably eroded another six inches or more um, in, into the creek bed, um, just based on successive storms, I'm sure in many years of this happening. So I, I think the, the project that we're proposing is sound. It's, 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 I think, a reasonable uh, estimate in terms of cost. Um, I think one of the discussions I had with the board, uh, a few meetings ago was finding a contractor and, and to what extent we have to put this out to bid. And I think in our discussions, there was a, a value, um, mentioned, I think the value was like $37,000. And if that we were, if we were under that value, we could simply get, say, three contractors to bid on this and, um, and choose one of the three versus going with a complete uh, public bidding, um, process.
Okay. And does the group ball at all, Scott, uh, contribute to the stabilization of, of the bank? If it's removed, will that am I making any sense? Further possible erosion?
Well, the, the, yeah, the root ball actually does create a more stable bank there, um, as it is. Um, but it's, but it's gotten so large that it's being prof, it's problematic. And the, and the stone that we're putting on that side, right at that location is intended to stabilize that area.
Instead, okay, instead of the group ball. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lily. Any, any other, uh, questions or, or Scott about this? Or any, yes, Justin?
Um, yeah, thank you. I, I did look over the, uh, the quotes and, and everything seems reasonable. Um, I've also got the, uh, the image of where the easements lie. And I, I guess I would just like to see the, I'm curious to see what the easements look like, um, what's written in there and, and what's included. Um, it sounds like the, uh, the trees, uh, have been an issue in the growth of the trees. So I was wondering if the easements cover something like, um, our ability to, to go in and, and take care of trees before they, they cause problems in the future.
I, I think the, um, Jeff can probably speak to it better than I can, but what we do is we typically identify the area where we think the easement makes sense to be. And then there's generally a boilerplate easement agreement that we have, which can be modified or tweaked to whatever the project may require. Jeff, you can probably speak to that. The requirements that we typically put in there for access and what have you. I don't know if that agreement's been drawn up yet.
The agreement has been drawn up because we really haven't had the okay to go ahead and start this project. Um, yeah, it would be a a general maintenance easement, whatever we had to do to take care of maintaining that bank. That included taking trees down. It would, we'd take trees down. So it's going to be a general maintenance.
Just a temporary agreement or is this a?
No, it's permanent. It'll be permanent, permanent easement.
Okay, thank you.
And that's really to our advantage. So we, we ensure
Yeah.
that it's properly maintained over the long term. That's really what we would want. Am I correct?
Correct. Hey, hey, Scott.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of seeker, it, wouldn't these be like the maintenance of an existing facility?
Yes. Uh, I mean, in, in many respects, when I look at this project, it's, you know, a type two action jumps out at me. Um, but, but I, but in the, I, I'm trying to remember how we got to the full EAF that we did, but I think perhaps because we're in some area of Pittsford that is historic. Um, you know, it kicked us into the long EAF, maybe.
I don't either. I, I really want to, I, and I'm not really prepared tonight to tie that detail down. But if it's a, if it's a type two action, not an unlisted action. If it's a type two action, maintenance of an existing facility, and I'm not convinced that I'm right, that that's on the type two list, then it would, there wouldn't be a seeker review required, even though if it isn't in, it is in a, an historic district. We wouldn't need to do it because it's type two.
I guess I'll, I'll leave that up to you folks. I know when we got into this discussion previously, I had sort of felt it was a type two and what I think our default took us to doing the long form EAF. I'm trying to remember if Steve I had some input on this.
I thought it was because it was an unlisted action that kicked it up to type one, uh, a long form. But I, it seems to me that I, I guess I'd just like to tie down that detail and I'm not prepared to do that tonight.
Okay, yeah. I mean, if it's type two, that makes things a lot easier. Um, uh, as I think you know, if it is deemed to be a type two, then really seeker is over with. Um, and, and if it, and if it's not, and it becomes, uh,
Yeah, it's either, it's either type two or type one. It can't be unlisted.
Well, we're narrowing it down. Yes, Justin?
Just one other question related to the easements and sharing the cost for maintenance with the property owners. It looks from the, where the easement line is, is drawn here, um, that this would all be in the easement that we hold, um, and it would be subject to how that's written up. So I, I guess, um, I was just wondering, um, uh, i- it, it seems like how the, it, it depends on how the easement is written, but if we have responsibility for something, but then the homeowner has to pay half of it, um, do we really have responsibility for it? You know, it, it kind of seems like either it's our responsibility or it doesn't. Um, and maybe Jeff could speak to, to that.
Yes, it's my understanding, maybe I've gotten it wrong, that the initial installation cost is going to be split. But maintenance thereafter will be the village's responsibility.
Right.
And the easement will be drafted that way.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
That was, that was the discussion that we had and what, what they, uh, agreed to. Yes, Lily?
Uh, do we have it, uh, was it budgeted in this cycle? I didn't recall that it was. And would we be able to, um, bump it into, into the next, um, budget cycle? To accommodate this, uh, $37,000 that we have not anticipated?
It, it's 25,000 plus, uh, 2,500. So we're really looking around 27 to 28,000.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and we also have ARPA funds and they're, uh, I'm not sure, we may want to take a look also at possibility of some sewer funding because we are actually addressing an issue where we are tying back into our public sewer. So we do have funds available directly through the ARPA funds for sure.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and this actually, you know, the ARPA funds, just so you all understand and the public understands, um, they are restricted funds. Um, so they are, um, be used for things like this where it's infrastructure, um, you know, sort of our larger types of projects. Um, so this is, this actually would fit that bill. Yeah. Any other, any other questions or comments from the board? Well, I'd like to, um, the board to entertain giving direction to both Jeff and Scott to move forward with this project. And Jeff, you know, the easements and taking a look at whatever type of seeker we need. And Scott as well to, to, uh, be working with you.
Yeah, we, we can work up, I can work with you, Jeff, on, on the, um, a, agreement part. I guess we can pin down the seeker typing, if you will. Um, I, I think, um, w- once, once the seeker typing is taken care of and, and the easements are are ready, I, I'd like to get this over to the DEC as quickly as possible. They, they just don't move very quickly over there.
Okay.
Scott, in, in your judgment, we, we wouldn't be actually doing the action right now. So do you need to get something over to the DEC in terms of seeker? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, my experience with them has been that's usually their first question.
Okay.
Has, has the, has the, uh, local authority looked at this and have they, um, determined the environmental?
Okay, yes, Steve.
I'm curious, I, I, does this have to go to Monroe County also?
Monroe County, who are Monroe County?
Planning.
Are we within 500 feet of a state highway?
Hmm, I'm not sure.
Or a municipal boundary? Yeah, I guess maybe we are.
We are with.
Yeah, because you're on the end of Rand Place, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's something I, I will have to, we'll have to talk, Scott, and I have to put it together and send it to Monroe County also.
Yeah, we'll have. And I'll bet you they'll say it has to go to DEC.
Okay, so Steve, we're throwing you in the mix with, with Scott and Jeff.
That's all right, because I wanted, I wanted to look at the seeker also. It's for my own edification and maybe, you know, help out on it too.
Great, thank you. Yes, Renee.
Um, Scott, you mentioned that you, the timeline might shift a little bit because we're heading into winter. So, um, what, what is a realistic timeline for this, to, for, for getting this all, um, wrapped up, particularly determining whether it's a type one or type two?
Well, you know, um, w- once we get through the, the typing and we get it into the DEC's hands and we, um, hopefully get their blessing and can put it out to construction, uh, having determined the contractor in between that time. There's a part of me that, that thinks that spring is the best time to do it, but then this is a project that um, really benefits from low flows going through the creek. And part of the, uh, work assignment is to divert the flows around the work area. So it may be a better winter project when I think about it. Well, Zach, do you have any feelings on this? Uh, curious to know what you think.
Winter would probably be the easiest for the contractor. Um, but I don't see it happening before then.
Yeah, and, and there's, and there's another element to it all, which is, um, uh, the market right now for uh, construction, people, contractors, materials and everything. It's really kind of crazy out there. It's hard to find, um, a good contractor and it's hard to find good pricing. Um, that's, that's, so that's why I put the little caveat at the bottom of the, uh, estimate that I provided to you, the prices we show there, the cost we estimate are subject to the market conditions at the time that we put it out to bid. Um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll come in within that range. I'm, I'm more concerned, however, that we can find a qualified contractor who wants to build it within a reasonable amount of time.
Well, I, I think that, you know, we have a number of variables here that we're working with as, as a municipality, as well as many others. I mean, I think we're all in the same boat. Um, I do think we need to move forward and uh, with what we have discussed. Um, and I think that's the action item. And, you know, a- as things unfold, we'll find out, you know, and we report back to the board.
Yeah. I- is it possible to start reaching out to contractors at this point, um, just to kind of get an idea of availability and what they're going to bid it at? Or if, if it's, you know?
If they're interested?
If they're interested.
Yeah.
Um, before, you know, before you start the whole, uh, legal process of, of submitting easements and all this stuff.
Well, I, I think, you know, given the amount of time we'll have available while this is going through the next, uh, element of the review process, might as well take advantage of the time to circulate the plans by some contractors and and see how interested they are in bidding the project.
Yeah, if, if that's the case, then, um, I mean, as long as, uh, i- it may be possible to do this as a winter project.
Yeah.
So the process isn't necessarily 100% linear. We can be doing things concurrently and trying to move things forward.
Right, right.
Reporting back to the board. Okay.
Yeah, we, we can do some parallel items while this is chugging through the approval process.
Okay. Chugging through. I like that. All right. Um, so we have some action items here. Uh, we're all in agreement. You know, I think we've got, thank you, Scott, and
Sure.
Uh, you know, for really, you know, pulling this together and really, you know, clarifying, I think, what was needed uh, to make this happen. And, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. And I guess now it's, uh, Jeff, Scott and Steve powwowing and, and put, pulling together the documents and things that we need. Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, that was a good comment by Steve. I, you know, I had, I had forgotten about the county planning. I, I'm, I'm not sure that they will have other new things for us, but I think, uh, yes, as a matter of the 239 M requirement that we have, we should send our plans into them. And I'll, I'll be in touch with you tomorrow about that. Okay?
Yes, Steve.
I do, I do think this, I think we have a good case for putting in as a type two because it has emergency access that are made necessary for protection or preservation, life, health, property or natural resources.
Right.
Good one. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, move for, move forward on that. That's great.
See y'all later.
Okay, thanks again.
Yep, bye bye.
Bye. Okay, next up, um, the discussion, the village board rules of procedure. We're, of the screen move. There we go. There you are, Justin. Yep.
Sure. Yeah, if, if I may, um, I had been looking at this, uh, the section of, uh, the NICOM recommendations that cover rules of procedure, including when things go on the agenda. Um, and, uh, when the meetings are held, uh, just basic pieces of about, uh, how, how we organize ourselves and, and conduct the meetings. So this board recently just adopted some guidelines for public comment, uh, which are a part of those broader rules of procedure. Um, NICOM suggests that we look at all of these, um, and perhaps even more if we wanted to. So what I did in this draft was that I just took the guidelines for public comment that we adopted previously, um, in, in a recent meeting. Uh, and I added in the, uh, date on which we usually hold our meetings during the month. And the rest is just the boilerplate NICOM, uh, guidelines. So, um, you know, I, this is really just for discussion. Um, and in fact, you know, I, I know that this, uh, the village has had a lot going on in the last couple of weeks, um, and the, uh, the agenda was posted quite late in, in this meeting. Um, and, uh, we, we just got the, uh, the published form today, uh, and, and that was put on the website today. Um, and, you know, according to these guidelines, I, I think that would actually be all right. Um, you know, there's no uh, hard deadline where we have to stop adding things to the agenda. Um, and, you know, maybe a good point for discussion would be how that feels to everyone, you know, do we, um, is that the way that we want to generally conduct things? Or do we want to try to have agenda items and, and the agenda prepared um, with a little bit more notice? Um, and I, I understand that there were extenuating circumstances this week, so certainly not placing any blame, but I think this is a good, um, a, a good checkpoint to see if this is what we want to do, uh, if this is enough, or if as a board, we would like to set guidelines where generally we have, uh, the agenda out a few days in advance. Um, so anyway, just, uh, I, I don't, um, I also think that it wouldn't necessarily be fair to the, uh, the public and, and for, uh, perhaps other members of the board, if we were to move forward and adopt this tonight. So I, I don't expect to do that, but just wanted to get this kicking around, um, to, to hear what some thoughts are.
Yeah, I kind of wish Dorothea were here. You know, she's on vacation, you know, through, uh, for the next couple of meets, me, uh, meeting, not meetings, but next couple of weeks. Um, because she certainly can speak to that. Um, I do know, and she has actually researched with other municipalities, we typically put out, um, our agenda and packet well ahead, actually, of many other municipalities. Um, and that actually was even confirmed at NICOM and, and other discussions that we had. Um, I do think what we do run into is sort of the adding on and the adding on at the last minute and something else comes in. You know, for example, I received information. You know, for example, I received information from Scott very much late in the day, but I knew, hopefully, if anybody could catch that before the meeting. It would be, would have been helpful to see the diagrams, things like that, you know, we're all human, we're all trying to get as much information pulled together as quickly as we can. And uh, well in advance of our meetings, and I think, you know, I think you're right about that, you know, we really do want to try to create that as best practice, but. Considering even just more recently, the circumstances that we had, we have one person, one person in Village Hall on Friday. Because of everything, you know, a lot, lot happens here. Yeah, Lily, did you have your hand up or were you?
Yeah, I did, thank you. Um, yes, I think the only time that it would become. I I'll call it an issue for lack of a better term, is if we are the board considering uh, a local law or similar where something would have to age. That the board would have to read it and be familiar with it before voting at the meeting on Tuesday. So in that case, we would, we would be uh, under some uh, constraint as far as time, and that would be the only. I think concrete um, uh, time limitation that we would have as far as have the agenda. Uh, at packet in our hands ahead of the meeting, is is that, would that be correct, Jeff? Or you were not listening to me, Jeff?
I was listening.
Okay.
How would you say I wouldn't be listening? I'm just not quick on the unmuting. That that would be one option, the, I think what what trustee Lightke was trying to get to was whether or not. Uh, the public should have more notice of what was on the agenda and whether, you know, there should be some. Outer limit when things get added, so that when a member of the public looks, they know what's going to be discussed, and if there's something of interest to them. Then they would show up, be present for that discussion, that, I mean, and that's certainly a board decision, not a legal decision.
Yeah, and you know, I I do do want to circle back to um, the comment I made before, Dorothy is going to be back for our next meeting, and I think. Um, you know, as village clerk, I think it's really important that we also hear from her because she really is the one. Um, you know, sort of fielding everything, coming in, um, and I think she really could give us um, some some valuable. You know, insight and information, you know, to further the discussion, because I think it is a good discussion and I appreciate you bringing this up for sure. Any other thoughts from the, from the uh, board here? Yes, Jeff.
Uh, did you say that that Dorothy had sort of polled other nearby municipalities and what they do for their rules of procedure or not? I I'm sure what.
I don't know that she formally polled, um, we had discussed it, actually just prior to her her leaving and um, on vacation. And we also talked, spoke about it at N I COM, you know, with other people from different municipalities and. Um, many municipalities, they just post it like the night before the meeting, you know. Um, and that's kind of it.
I I guess I was speaking more generally to rules of procedure, you know.
Oh, the rules of procedure, um, the ones that we use now pretty much are guidelines that, you know, Justin put forth, as you know. So I don't know that there's any significant difference with other municipalities, but we can, I know Dorothy probably has much more information than I do. Um, she really was the person who was sort of tackling this, you know, because it directly affects her, you know, she's really trying to get the packet out. Pull together all that information, you know, last minute things coming in over the transom, you know, so. Um, again, I think it, um, I'd like this board to, you know, entertain the opportunity for Dorothea to speak with us on this issue. Or this concern, anyway, uh, the next meeting, because she will be back. I think that would be prudent. Any other, yes, Justin?
Uh, no, I I think that all sounds great, and I also agree that this is generally what we do. Um, you know, it's not about uh, necessarily setting hard timelines, but I I agree with um, Jeff's summary of of what I was trying to say, you know, it's it's about giving a public notice. And perhaps something that um, we would consider is, um, you know, when when there's not an emergency item, you know, so a good example could be the compost thing that I brought up. You know, if I don't get my act together and and put that uh, and and ask for that to be in the agenda a few days ahead of time, then it just gets rolled over to the next meeting. Um, you know, if we want to, would consider adopting something like that for non-emergency items, that might be helpful to the board and the public.
Yeah, that that'd be a great, great thing to discuss, yes, Renee.
I know Dorothy has, we've talked about this, at least since I've been on the board, trying to get um, everything into the packet by Friday. And we've tried to respect that unless it was an emergency, so I think Dorothy would probably um, support, you know. Limiting last minute additions, it really makes her um, a little stressed out, um, as expected, to get a lot of things and have to. Keep submitting new packets, so um, I look forward to what she has to say once.
Yeah, and 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 you raise a good point, because it's not just updating the packet, you know, it's updating the website, you know, it's making sure everything is in sync sort of across all the media. Um, that we have, so, um, yeah, I'm I'm with Renee, you know, Dorothy, I'm sure will be happy to weigh in on this, yeah. Okay, so so why don't we, you know, let's move this forward, uh, when Dorothy is back for the next meeting, does that sound good for everybody? And we can, you know, maybe kind of firm some things up then with Dorothy.
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful, thanks so much for that. Okay, um, you know what, actually, why don't we do this, I know Brooklyn has been waiting patiently. Before we go to the climate smart um, agenda item, could we, uh, if everybody's okay with that, switch to the, just the treasures report and. Village clerk report, so we can kind of get that wrapped up. That makes sense, okay, getting nods, all right, okay, so the treasures report, please, Brooklyn. Can I mute? Hello? There he is.
Okay, good, good, hopefully I'm coming in clear, I'm coming from the, calling from the car, just finishing up football practice, but um. If I've been here with you guys, listening, listening and yelling when I can, sneak those in, but um. Again, apologize for the delay on the treasure report, um, I was just in on Monday and today, so I got that to you guys as soon as possible. Um, are there any questions about anything?
Yes, Justin, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I I just had one and and, um, sorry, this is something that I would have uh, emailed you before the meeting about too, but I I was just looking at it when it was sent out. Um, I'm looking for the uh, the exact item now, it was a uh, uh, general code, um, code analysis. I believe about fifteen hundred dollars, and I'll try to pinpoint the exact item, just wondered if if anybody knew um, what that item was. I I didn't know that we had, um, I I I know there are general um, charges for updating the code on general code, I just didn't know that we approved any kind of code analysis.
I am leaning toward that as an annual fee, Justin, I can definitely get that info to you, uh, first thing in the morning. Um, I do remember looking at that briefly, uh, Mary did a great job this week, uh, holding down the port for me. But um, as far as reviewing bills, that came in this week and I didn't get a great chance to look it over. But it was something Mary um, left in my file to be added for the vouchers.
It was voucher number two twenty six.
Yes, number two twenty six.
Yeah, we can follow up on that, I I I am tending to think it is something that's annual, Justin, but we can, we can follow up, you know, offline on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, any other uh, questions, yes, Lily.
I I just wanted to let the board know that uh, Chairperson Moda approved the uh, Zoglin bill. And I understand that uh, P C B A Chairperson Valistra uh, did the same.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any motions to approve anything?
I'll make a a motion to approve all the vouchers except for two two six.
Lanfear, second.
Well, how about if we approve two two six pending? Well, I'm just trying to, because the checks are all, I mean, I just, I'm worried about holding up funding.
Okay, so how do I, what do I, what, uh, we want to make sure it's a, that we understand what what that is, and that's.
Want to say pending, pending review.
Yeah.
By.
That's, that's fine, yeah.
Just so you have a chance to look at it and understand it.
Sure, I can, I can take a look, if somebody wants to shoot me an email, it sounds like it's probably an annual cost, assuming it's an annual cost, uh, then then uh. Approve all the vouchers subject to to that review.
Okay.
Why don't you prove, prove all the vouchers subject to two two six being an annual normally incurred cost?
There you go, see?
Nice.
Thanks, Jeff, I amend to what he said.
So, see, we haven't blocked Jeff, he's been great.
I'll land for your second.
Okay, trustee Lightke?
Hi.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Lanfear?
Hi.
And Mer Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, anything else, Brooklyn?
Um, no, that is it, Justin, I will get that sent out to you and everyone else, just for clarity. And um, Renee, if you have a chance tomorrow, if you can please stop by and sign the checks for us.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, village clerk report.
Um, Dorothea did not leave anything in particular for me, um. Like she said, she's been on vacation, um, the past few weeks, we have had a lot of residents calling in. Um, saying that they did not receive their tax bill. Um, we believe that might be an issue going on with the post office. Um, that's, the tax bills are run through another company that prepares them. Um, so just because we noticed that happening a lot, I thought I would let the board know as well, um, but. People have been um, paying them and sewer rent and tax season is wrapping up now.
Okay, yes, Renee.
Um, do we need to uh, address any fees that they might incur if they're paying up late? Um, if it is like, uh, if it is delayed in the mail and they, they didn't get it, I don't even know what the the fees are, I should know that, but I don't.
You know what, why don't Marina, I'll follow up with you tomorrow on that, I want to understand sort of this process with the other company handling. The mailing, you know, I mean, I received mine, so.
Yeah.
Why don't we follow, yeah, I think Renee, that's a, that's a good point, just to kind of. See where that's.
We should pull, probably pull in Mary too, because she is familiar with the program it goes through, so if there's any kind of. Fee override, she might know about it.
Yeah, yeah, because that, that, I think that's probably a practical way to look at it, you know, just to make sure. People didn't get it, how do they know, so? But I have, yeah, yeah, there have been some issues, I know, with the post office. Okay, anything else from the village clerk, that's it, your, your update?
That's all.
Okay.
Brooklyn's got his hand rinsed.
Oh, Brooklyn, hi.
Hi, just to chime in, I just wanted, anyone who's listening or sees this recording, if you, and you have not received your taxes. That tax information is available on our website, if you, uh, in the header on the tax information line, you can search by your last name or address. And you would be able to see what is old and the current late fees on that.
Oh, thanks, Brooklyn, for that, yeah, and you know what, let's, we'll do a posting, we'll put up a post tomorrow about this. Um, and, you know, letting people know that if if you haven't received anything, just exactly what you said, and, you know, how to find out that information. Thanks for that, really appreciate it. Okay, moving on, um, climate smart resolution.
Sure, if if I may, um, this is something that I I brought up, uh, during our recent discussion about a composting program. Um, and having a residential composting program, as well as a lot of the uh, the uh, other initiatives that we've discussed as a board. Fall under the New York State uh, Climate Smart Program, so uh, essentially, we can work towards becoming a a climate smart community. Um, by accumulating points through these different initiatives that, um, I I think that a lot of us on the, on the board feel strongly about. Um, and and uh, align with some of the things that we've, uh, we've discussed in in several meetings. Um, so what I would like to do is uh, sign this resolution to um, get started to to formally enroll in the program. Um, and uh, this is just the boilerplate language from the uh, New York State Climate Smart website. Um, and there are are ten points, uh, that that talk about goals that we that we share as a board. Um, about building a climate smart community, decreasing energy use, shifting to renewable energy. Um, and uh, including things like informing and inspiring the public, um, about uh, environmentally friendly initiatives. Um, so this, this doesn't come with uh, specific actions that we have to undertake, it's really just saying that we agree with these uh, starting points in principle. Um, and that we can start, uh, you know, uh, based on our ability and and willingness to engage in in some of these goals, we can start to. Uh, move forward on on particular initiatives. Um, so this is the uh, the resolution that I I wanted to uh, um, to hear your thoughts on.
Any thoughts from the board? Um, you know, I think, you know, we all, we're all excited about all of this, um. Uh, you know, it's it's pretty comprehensive, you know, the ten points. Um, I don't know, do we know of other villages that are doing this, or have any other additional information about that? And how, you know, how the the overall approach, you know, I know I've been talking about a, you know, village-wide sustainability initiative. Obviously, that's certainly a component of this, but really, there's an organizational kind of element to this. Um, and sort of an architecture that I think we need to also be considering, you know, with this undertaking.
Sure, oh, um, trustee Stetser had her, her hand up.
Oh, Renee, yeah.
I think Lily was before me, but I can't tell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Nope, okay, um, this is in our, one of the action items of our comprehensive plan, um, in that's three to five year timeframe. So it was already identified, and just becoming, um, just passing the resolution doesn't cost us any money. It's when we start undergoing this, the certification, so, um, I don't see any, any harm to to doing it at this point. It won't cost us anything, and there's no expectation that we will immediately um, get to work on the, on the certification either. But it just, you know, kind of is a statement of our values and it's in line with our, um, what was identified in our comprehensive plan.
Oh, definitely, I mean, there's really no downside, I know, I know where we're all going with it, but I just want to make sure. You know, we we hopefully can kind of set a few guidelines here, yeah, Lily.
Yes, would would we uh, wish to consider um, making a motion on it this evening, or would you prefer to move it to the next? Meeting and and take a vote on it at that time?
Oh, I think it's up to the board, I mean, I'm just hoping, you know, for discussion, um, you know, for example, you know, um, early on, um. We, you know, I had contacted the Golisano Sustainability Institute, and they're going to be coming in and looking, for example, at our heating system. Well, this, this is clearly a component of what we're talking about, possibly, potentially, if we go to like a geothermal. Or something that's far more sustainable and energy efficient, I mean, we're already looking at these things, so we're kind of. You know, putting it out there anyway, I do love the idea of doing this, certainly. Um, as a resolution, so it's really up to the board, what you, what you folks would like to do, we could, you know, do a little more investigation. For example, I'm going to a mayor's dinner uh, this week, and um, I'm going to talk, you know, talk with them about this. Hey, what are you guys doing, what are you guys doing, are you, have you signed on with this? Because also, if they haven't, maybe they want to as well, I mean, I think it's always interesting to know how other municipalities that are our size and our scale. Are really trying to tackle these issues, you know.
Bless you.
Yep, Justin.
Um, personally, I I don't really see any downsides of doing this, um, as was already mentioned. Um, there, there's no mandatory cost, um, if you look at the New York State Climate Smart website, they've got a neat map where you can see communities that have signed up. Um, and there are quite a few, um, over in Victor, I don't know if it's the uh, the town or the village, but uh, one of them has has signed this. Um, several others in Rochester, um, and all over the state, and you can see the different certification levels, but. There are also plenty who have just signed up and who haven't achieved any certification levels, so. Um, unless there are objections to the the principles, which we could certainly talk about, um, you do have to, you can change the uh, the preamble in this. But you need to sign on to all the principles, and uh, personally, I've I've looked through those and I don't have any issues with them, so. Um, I would be ready to uh, to move forward with this.
Is there any comment from our attorney about this?
Jeff, do we need the language? Oh, sorry.
No, it's because about the language or something, if there's anything like that, that's all.
Just the preamble is generic, it, like, uh, what trustee Lightke just said, do we need to fix that before we can vote on it? Or could we fix that tonight and vote on it?
So I haven't taken a long look at this thing, because I wasn't sure the board wanted me to. I didn't want to do that, but if you want me to take a longer look at it, I'd be happy to do that.
Should we have Jeff maybe take a look to craft it a little bit more for us with the language, or, I mean, I mean, I think we all agree to the. The principles of it, you know, as as we were saying before.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's really worth the, uh, I I respect and appreciate uh, our attorney's input. Um, I think this is pretty boilerplate, uh, the only thing that I've changed on here is to add the Village of Pittsburgh. Um, and this all comes from the state, um, I don't think there's that much that is substantial or or liability inducing in the pri- uh, preamble. Um, and uh, so I I don't necessarily think that we need to uh, um, to expend further resources on on that review.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Is there any action that a board member would like to take?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt the uh, the climate spark. Sure, I'll I'll make a motion that we adopt the uh the Climate Smart Resolution for the Village of Pittsburgh.
Is there a second?
Second.
All call, please.
Okay, trustee Lanfear.
Hi.
Trustee Stexer.
Hi.
Trustee Lightgum.
Hi.
And Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Yeah, and I I will be speaking with, you know, as I said, the other villages, because I'm interested to see, you know, what their approach is. Because I think everybody's really trying to think about this and move forward. Um, okay, so we're moving on to uh member items, and I do. You know, we were sort of putting this down every single time, something about the marijuana legalization um updates and. Um, Dorothea had put in a call to, you know, we had left off where we wanted to speak with the Board of Elections. Dorothea was gonna call. Uh, to find out if they would be able to handle our referendum during the cycle. Of the elections in March, even though we have uh no offices, you know, no, no candidates up for election at that time. Um, she did not hear back. I have also made additional calls um directly, and I have not heard back either. Um, which I'm a little surprised. I think maybe they're busy. I'm not quite sure. But um that is my update, is that we are still trying to reach out and find out if in fact they will be able to oversee. Um, our public referendum on our behalf, so that's just where it is. Simple update. Yeah, Marina.
Um, I was just gonna note, it looks like we skipped over the crossing guard and um.
Oh, we did.
You want Jeff to do his report if he has any?
Well, Jeff, you didn't have a report, am I correct, Jeff?
You are correct, Mayor.
Okay, so.
I mean, it's just the day-to-day stuff that usually goes on. There's nothing big in the pipeline.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay, so we checked that off. You're right, and I apologize. I did. I did skip over the crossing guard, and that's important, and that's Renee.
That's okay. I can do it as part of member items, too. Um, there isn't any action we need to take. We put it on there when we weren't sure whether we need to take action yet. So um I'll just give everyone an update, and we expect an an application probably at the next next meeting. Um, due to the bus driver shortage, there are no late buses running for men in high school, urban suburban students. And so they're currently bused to Sutherland High School, and they all uh have to walk um from there to catch the the RTS. Uh, bus uh around four o'clock-ish. Um, and so it's about double the amount of of students who normally do this. And the Sutherland Urban Suburban, oh wait, I already mentioned that, the, sorry. So there's a, there's, I I don't have a number, but there's twice twice as many. And um we already know this is a notorious trouble spot, and the director of the Urban Suburban um program. Happened to be at the corner and uh last week watched as the group tried to cross. Um, at one of the busiest times, and she was very concerned for their safety, and she contacted the District PTSA. Uh, co liaison for the Urban Suburban Program and asked if they could help um get a crossing guard there. The liaison contacted the town supervisor Smith said um they could add uh. Ten thousand dollars to next year's budget for consideration uh to fund a crossing guard. Of course, that's not guaranteed. It would be a, you know, a proposed addition, um because they already do fund other crossing guards at other locations. And in the meantime, they're looking for an immediate solution that would put a team of volunteers. Together to provide assistance at that that crossing at Sutherland and Monroe, just from three thirty to four every day until bus service. Improves or until it's budgeted or or whatever. We know this is a long-term um problem. Um, for decades, the village has identified this this area. The uh DOT is making some minor adjustments to that crossing there, but it's um, you know, we've we've asked for a light. Um, long before I lived here, other things. Um, and there's concerns with putting a light there. Because it will uh possibly back up traffic onto the track, even though drivers know they're not supposed to be on the railroad track, all sorts of things. Um, so it's a state road, again slated for minor improvements, but this is just a a symptom of a a greater problem. But we need to help them um in the meantime, feel safe crossing, and so. Um, the liaison is gonna go to the PTSA or possibly the school district. Um, to put together some volunteers to help in the short term. Um, and they will come to us with a likely, if they decide to do this, a non-municipal use permit. Um, and I spoke with Jeff about this. It feels like a million years ago, but I think it was last week sometime. Is there anything I missed, Jeff?
You did not, but that non-municipal use permit allows us to get the. Liability insurance coverage running to us that we would want to see in that kind of arrangement.
So that that would potentially be coming from the school?
From somebody.
Or PTSA. Um, I know when we did Bike to School Day, PTSA was our sponsor for the.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Um, you know, who knows? They may not feel comfortable enough putting volunteers out there. There are issues with having. Untrained volunteers being crossing guards, but this is, you know, this is trying to to to. Fix an immediate problem um while we also underscore a a long a long-term longstanding issue in our. At that intersection.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. How much training do they need? Like, what what's what does that entail to make sure?
I know we looked at putting one at uh Maple and South last year. Um, they did, oh Zach, do. You want to take over, Zach? I can't tell.
Yeah, his hands up.
I was I was gonna let you finish your thought.
Oh, okay, I thought you had numbers. Um, I mean, that ten thousand is is spot on for what it it costs. Um, to add an additional um guard, and they do go through training. I don't know how long it takes to train them, and that's one of the things that I talked to the liaison about. Um, you know, PTSA may decide, or whoever, if they do come to us, they'll they they may want to put them through some kind of of training.
At least something, yeah, okay. Yeah, Zach.
Uh, has anybody reached out to the the Sheriff's Department to see if they'd be willing to loan somebody out for an hour and a half or so while the kids cross?
OMG, how, where were you last week? How did I not even think of that?
Well, we do have a meeting tomorrow, you know.
Oh, my God, holy crap. You're a genius, Zach. See, this is why I mean.
I get lucky sometimes.
Well, we have our, we have our meeting tomorrow, Renee, so let's let's bring that up.
Okay.
Yeah, but we have our meeting, you guys, with the Sheriff's Department, so. Perfect timing.
We may not need a non-municipal use permit at all. Holy cow.
Well, it's totally worth looking into, absolutely. Thanks, Zach. Yeah. Oh, are you? Is your hand up or are you just waving?
I I muted myself, so I was just saying, I acknowledge.
All right. We're all getting a little punchy here. Um, okay, anything else to add, Renee? I mean, I. I support that. I think, you know, it's a safety issue, really. Sure. So we'll follow, so the action item, then let's follow up immediately then tomorrow. With our meeting, I think that'll, you know, that's an opportunity. You know, to put that out there.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, so back back quick. Anything else? Okay, back quickly then to member items. Uh, compost scheduling the workshop.
Sure, when when does everybody want to talk about dirt?
Yeah, just um uh trustee Lightgum was this, this, if I recall, this wasn't a workshop to discuss. Um, whether we're gonna do a program and what it would look like. It would be much like what we did with the Community Choice Aggregation. Um, where we brought someone in to have a workshop for the community, correct?
Have an educational component, was that was my understanding?
Yes.
Uh, well, I I did speak with. I'm sorry, um, I did speak with uh Dr. Abner, who was interested in coming in and talking about composting, similar to the presentation that she did. Uh, in in March, I believe it was. Um, we've tossed around a couple of ideas about residential composting programs. Um, I I think that uh this, there could be an educational component, um, but I my my goal would be. Um, that there would actually be some action that comes out of this in terms of the the list of uh climate smart activities that the um. The village government can engage in to to move towards the the goals that uh that we seem to have in common. Um, so it could be a little of both, you know, there's there's an academic, there's an educational component, and then. Um, you know, the idea is to to talk about what fits. It's it doesn't just stop at education. Um, so that would that would be what I'd be looking to to achieve with this.
Um, well, I think, you know, it seems like you're kind of getting the ball rolling on that, so. Um, I think it may make sense um to put together kind of a, you know, the agenda of things and and what what would be covered. And get circulate that back to the board, you know, maybe we can come up with some tentative dates.
I I think that we've, um, my my understanding is that we had talked about some of that, so the the idea would be that there could be a quick presentation. Um, and then we've actually talked about a couple of concrete ideas. We've actually discussed uh residential composting programs, whether we might be interested in. Subsidizing part of the uh the cost of a monthly program. Uh, we where we could take a a smaller step of just having a couple of um tote exchanges. Uh, at some place like Village Hall or the the DPW. Um, so I'd actually like to talk about those concrete options as well. Um, and so that would that would be the agenda.
As well as to composting in your own yard.
Sure, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, that's part of composting would be, part of that workshop would be all the different types of options, I I would think that would be out there. You know, I say that as an avid composter in my yard.
Yeah, I I think that um, you know, those those activities are are all to be encouraged, and then part of the the Climate Smart Resolution is. Inspiring and and educating people, so um I think the people who do it at home are great. Um, the the commercial options uh that we've discussed about uh curbside pickup and the the tote exchanges. Um, open up opportunities for other things to be composted that you can't really do at home. Um, so those actually have different advantages, and and we'd like to. Um, I I think it would be great to to talk to people about those and and see what the interest is and. Um, you know, carry on that discussion about concrete uh proposals that that are aligned with certain point values in the the Climate Smart Program, too.
Oh, understood.
That we have to take those actions, but I I think that it's a a great next step in the conversation.
Okay, um, so we'd have to be looking at dates, and you you want to do this on a, you know, like a weekend and evening thing, you know, what are you, what's everybody's thoughts? Justin, what are you thinking?
Uh, well, we've we've done a a bunch of other workshops for for things like uh marijuana. I think there is one, and and so I think that uh an evening would be fine. Um, this this could also be a board meeting. I mean, I think that at the last board meeting where we talked about concrete options, we wanted to put that aside into a workshop. Um, so maybe not everybody has to to be here um from Village Hall, you know, there there could be. Um, some people with with different interests in the DPW or or Village Hall. Um, but maybe we don't need the the full audience for a a regular meeting.
So you'd like us to schedule it as a workshop with the board that the public can zoom in on and and we can have it interactive?
Oh, sure.
Is that the thought? I mean, I'm just trying to come up with a format that that we all think is workable.
I I was proposing a, I was thinking a public meeting um and and getting that on the calendar, so.
Okay. Okay, Marina, do you have a calendar there to give us some dates?
I do. Um, are you gonna want to be looking to schedule this sooner or later?
Well, um. Well, let's see, we're in doctor.
Um, next week, there is a PZBA and HPV meeting.
That's way too soon. I mean, I'm I'm super booked out, almost every night. I'm thinking, we may want to go, um, how about the first week of November, because then it's we're sort of, you know, post Halloween. We're kind of on the other side of a few things here at Village Hall.
Yep, and there are no meetings scheduled for that week yet.
So that, you know, I'm thinking, do we want to maybe even look at a at a Wednesday or a Thursday that's sort of off? You know, because the town doesn't have meetings then either. I'm just trying to think, different people wanting to attend different meetings. Does that make sense?
I think there's the uh uh the town elections coming up that week, so we might just want to avoid um. Avoid that day. Uh, what is that, the second or the third?
Okay, I, you know what? I'm sorry, I was in the following week. I I.
Okay, we can keep it the following week if you want, that's fine, too.
I I was, we have our meeting. Um. Let's see. Well, we could do, let's see, there's HPV on Monday and our meeting Tuesday. How long do you envision this workshop going?
I I don't think that we'll, um, I I would hope that it's not more than an hour.
Yeah. Well, we could do it, we could do it that Wednesday, you know, do it like a six thirty to seven thirty, like an evening workshop. Does that make sense to you guys? Okay, so we're looking at Wednesday, November tenth for people? Should we try to work with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
That's okay with me.
Okay, then, yeah, if you could put that down, Marina.
Can do.
Six thirty for the the tenth, is it? And I can reach out to uh Dr. Abner.
Yeah, okay, and and you know, if she has a problem with that, or, you know, we'll coordinate everything, but let's try to shoot for around that. Um, so we want to have one more date for a backup, just in case something kind of goofs up.
Sure. The the next week, or I don't know when the uh, she's on the Town Environmental Board, so we don't want to overlap with those.
No, I know, you don't want to do that. And then Thursday's Veterans Day, so that's. Um, so should we look at the the, let's see, the following? So then that would be Wednesday, the seventeenth?
Mm-hmm.
So let's look at those two Wednesdays, those slots.
The tenth and the seventeenth.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. That that sounds really great. Um. Okay, any other member items? Yes, Lily.
Thank you. Um, it's all about seating. Uh, I just wanted to report to the board that in the past two weeks. Uh, the DPW has um done an amazing job of installing bench. I don't know if they. They also helped with the town installation, um, town property, but two benches, two donated benches, one went. Uh, at the library underneath the flagpole for Tom Cook, and the other was placed on State Street. Of in memory of Marguerite Rose. Um, the other seating uh issue was that um a resident mentioned. That the brass plaques are in need of cleaning, and I would like to suggest to Zach that um. That could be a an excellent scout project, that perhaps we could put that on the list. Um, if anyone calls or contacts the village about a a scout project in the future, that might be a. An awesome one, that they could also um do an inventory of the existing benches, their location, and who who the uh donors were. And so we have a um a a schedule of that and to clean the brass plaques. Um, the other seating issue is the um donated um seating. Uh, that was donated in memory of our gratitude uh to village clerk Anne Hartsick. Um, which has been outdoors typically in the winter. I wanted to point out that it has been brought indoors, that set has been brought indoors. And left in the foyer of Village Hall, and I would like to continue that practice so that the um donated benches do not deteriorate. And that's, those are my member items.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much. Yeah, come on, Zach.
Lily, that's a great idea with the uh the Boy Scouts. Um, I I wish I would have thought of that myself. That's awesome. Um. I I don't know if uh if we have any contacts with them, but if someone knows anyone that is a Boy Scout and is like, so I'm just. Have them reach out to me and I'll set it up.
I know where we can find um Boy Scout contacts for sure.
Okay, we'll coordinate that with Marina. A good idea, definitely. Any other member right? Oh, Lily, is that is that it for you? You're finished? Okay, yeah, Renee.
Um, I wanted to remind everyone that Nice Dot's having the open house. It's a virtual open house about the. Re- uh replacement project of the decking on the North Main Street Bridge, and that's Thursday from five to six, and the. Um, link is on our website. And I'm sorry, related to that is uh the uh Mayor Plummer, Zach and I are going to be meeting with Nice Dot and the emergency responders. About the pedestrian refuge islands, the proposed pedestrian ref- refuge island on North Main Street. Uh, we are meeting Thursday um to try to reach a uh some agreement on the design there. And then you mentioned as part of the North Main Street decking. Our uh deck replacement, the the sewer issues that we were, that Scott Harder Harder said we need a resolution on. When are we going to tackle that? And like, what's the deadline around that?
If you're asking me, I don't know what the deadline would be. Um, I'm sure they're trying to push it through as fast as possible. Maybe this is something that we could talk to uh to the DOT and talk to them on Thursday.
Okay, great.
Yeah, Scott's ready to go on that, too, so we we can just coordinate that and circle back with him.
I think there are a couple other things that we need to have um sorted out with the DOT, this project commences also. So it might it might open the door, you know, to a pre-preconstruction meeting between them and us. For any issues that we could see coming um from this.
Okay. Oh, you finished, Renee? Okay, she's finished. All right, um. I make a motion that we, uh, oh, Lily?
Oh, we're gonna.
Are, are we gonna have the portion of the program where we ask the um attendees if they have anything they would like to address the board? I do believe we put that in our public.
We, you're right. And I was gonna make a motion to go into executive session, but let's do that first and then we'll, we'll go into executive session. That, that's more practical.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anybody from the public wishing to speak on a, anything tonight? Marina, are you seeing any, anything coming in?
I don't see any hand raises or Q and A questions.
I'll give it another minute in case somebody's feverishly typing.
While we're waiting for that, can I um add one more thing? Um, I know-
Of course you can.
Uh, member items, but um you mentioned, you recognized Joni. Um, and I wanted to, to also recognize uh your, your time. I know you spent a lot of time um this last week at, at, at the hospital and, and checking in with people and keeping us all informed. So um I wanted to, to appreciate you as well. I know it's been a, a tough week.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, well, everybody's pulled together. Really was something. Hey, we're, we're good, Marina? What, anything?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, all right. No, but thanks, thanks for bringing that up. It's just more practical. Um, I would like to make a motion that we um adjourn or go into executive session uh for the purposes of discussing an HR matter regarding an employee.
I will second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgab?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
So how do we do this?
Yeah, because Renee's gonna take over.
Yeah. But we won't be able to see each other if we're, so can we all, the rest of us, Renee? Can Marina, can you assign the trustees and the mayor, um, all of us as um co-hosts still? So we can see each other, and Jack, sorry, so that we can see each other. Okay.
You are all co-hosts right now.
And anybody else that was made co-hosts outside from that, please uh, don't, you know, what is it, disable the co-hosting? It's, it will be the board and our attorney.
So that's, okay, that's you guys. Um, and um, I'm the regular.
Zach, yes? I'm sorry, Zach's hands up.
Will, will you guys need me for anything else tonight?
No, we're all set. Thanks so much, Zach.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah.
And thank you, Brooklyn. Thank you, Steve. Okay, and we have um disabled audio for the public.
Um, no, I, I'm trying to figure out how to assign you guys into a breakout room from here. Oh no, does Webinar not have breakout rooms? I think Webinar itself does not have breakout rooms.
Okay, so.
We ran into that before.
Um, hmm, then Jeff, I guess we're, we're gonna have to figure out another time to have an executive session about this.
Are we allowed a conference call? Like if we all?
Um, I just want to make sure we're covered legally, you know, about how we approach this, unless we could do another, set up another-
You have to enter executive session from a regular meeting. Or, or especially called meeting, but you can't just start an executive session.
Right, so.
Um, let me see if I can like set up a, like a totally separate meeting room.
Sure.
Okay.
If we kicked everyone out and it's just us um for the executive session and then we uh and then we, because we still have to come back and adjourn the meeting after the executive session, but would we need Marina to, to come back in or could we ourselves, without Marina there?
Your co-host.
Come back in and, and hit the, the recording again um to come out of executive session and uh adjourn the meeting without Marina or does the clerk need to be there?
We could text you when we're on our way out of the session, if worst case. But if, if Renee's a co-host, shouldn't she, she, you know, like I'm just picking Renee because we had to set that up in the beginning.
I don't, I don't know that there's any reason that the clerk has to come back in or the deputy clerk in this case. I mean, you know, as long as it's being recorded, the question I have is being opened back up to the public somehow.
Right, no, we understand that. Yeah, we're just trying to figure out logistics.
Yeah, there is a risk that the public could like drop back in, but as the co-host, you, you have the power to kick them out. Um, I would just be stopping the recording and like you, and like Renee said, emptying out the chat room. Um, and at that point, you guys would be within the parameters to hold your executive session.
Okay, so the recording would stop, you would close down the chat room and then uh well, we're all co-hosts, like I, I'll just, I'm using Renee only because we spoke about it earlier. Renee then could hit the record again once we make the motion to come back into the meeting. Is that, that's my understanding of this process?
Yeah, I can even pause it and then she can unpause the recording.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's no way to allow people not to join the meeting temporarily during our executive session.
No, you, it's, you can't really change how, like the functionality of these meetings while you're inside them. At least I haven't seen a way that you can really, um.
So essentially you're closing down the chat room.
Yeah, we're, we're kicking everybody out and um.
And so there's no audio, there's no audio feed then going through? How do we stop the audio feed?
Um, well, nobody would be hearing except for you guys in the room. And it would just be a matter of, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. She was asking about the recording too, right? So all of us have the functionality to stop the recording while we're in executive session and then put it back on when we're done.
Yeah, do you see in the top left-hand quarter where it says recording and then the pause option?
Yep.
Okay, yep. You'll have the beginning and the attendees cleared themselves out, so you would just have to be watchful of the attendee side and if anybody pops in, kick them right out.
I see six participants here.
Yeah, that's all of us.
Okay, so I just want to make sure it's just us.
Yeah. If you see the attendees next to it.
Okay.
You can see that there are zero attendees.
Okay.
No attendees.
Yeah, there we are. Okay, I just caught it. Yeah, I just was looking at the wrong spot. Okay.
So we, are we in, have, we have, did we vote to go into executive session? Yes, we did. So are we technically in executive session? Then we should stop the recording, correct?
Pause the recording and, and thank you.
The proper motion now is to acknowledge that you left executive session without taking action and that you are moving to um re-enter the regular meeting.
Okay, so.
Anybody so moved?
So moved. Second.
So. Mayor, why don't you call the roll since we don't have a clerk anymore?
Yeah. Okay, so I call the roll. Uh, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgab?
Aye.
And Mayor Plummer, aye. Okay, we're now back in our regular meeting. Um, I would like to make a motion that we take immediate action to um hire a part-time employee for our office uh at a rate of something between seventeen and eighteen dollars an hour and in addition, also post that position as well. Is there a-
I have a second.
Thank you, Lily. Okay, so it was me and then Lily. I'm, I'm writing this down. Okay, uh, roll call trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgab?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer, aye. Okay, so moved. Um, is there any other business before us? And I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, roll call trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lightgab?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care. Uh, stop recording. Did you stop the recording, Renee?